The standing item, operating capital budget for fiscal year 16. I don't know if anyone has anything to do this? No? The next item on the agenda, fiscal year 17, operating supplemental budget. Item A, potential special meeting, week of 5/23. I think Sherry said there's a consensus for 5/25?
Correct.
And at that time, Madam Chair, Mr. Shaw will bring forward the further bid recommendations that will be opened up tomorrow.
Are you planning on submitting another budget to the town?
No.
Are you just moving the money around FY17?
No, we felt like we had a request from the Budget Committee as well as from some school committee members that because of all the moving parts and because of, as we said over and over again, if the budget was developed in due come April, we'd have a more accurate budget.
So what?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about it, right? If we're gonna move the money around, let's say we can't make up the number 25 million, and we submit that to the town, they say, "Ah, we'll level funding at 24." Right? You're gonna have to go back and do the process all over again.
Well, if you don't want to, we'll do it.
We're not going to resubmit to the town.
We're not resubmitting, we're just updating you in terms of the moving pieces. Because I would think you would wanna know, given the precursor of being local appropriation being level funded, because you'd only request a 0.8% increase in local appropriation. So while this is done and the administrative team has done, which is a big effort, is if you wanted to encapsle the moving parts so you could see a picture, okay, so if it's this, you're okay, if it's this, you're not, that's all.
I didn't understand what the special meeting was about, and now I'm a little even more confused. I thought like John, what are they gonna do? Submit a new budget that was then submitted to the Budget Committee that they'll have a meeting to turn around and make a recommendation on, because that doesn't make sense.
Just gonna update you.
So, but why do you need our permission to provide the Budget Committee with updated numbers? Because I thought they asked for those when we all met, and that's what I thought this meeting was about, and I said, "Well, I have a problem at giving them updated numbers." Because they asked for the cost of the healthcare and, you know, the other numbers that we didn't have at the time, so are you having this meeting to like give us, have us give you permission to give them the updated numbers?
Not permission, we just thought as a school committee, you would wanna know as a result of contract settlements, healthcare, every, all of the other moving pieces, you would wanna look at where your FY17 budget draft submission now comes in, because there were a lot of moving pieces. Special ed, we were able to buy some hardware and supplies ahead of time, so we would just thought you would like to see that picture. It's not a whole new budget, it's probably three pages.
Okay, so we're gonna cover that plus the bid specs from Mr. Shaw with regard to the town.
That's all. Yeah, I just thought you would be interested.
No, no, I just want no one to get.
Mrs. Gillette?
I didn't want you to do a lot of work.
I think it's too late.
It's too late.
I just want you, I can't be there because we have a minutes agreement.
Oh, Jim's there.
It's not concrete at the moment. We have a meeting, I know this is on later in the agenda, we have a meeting this Thursday, and that's when we're going to actually solidify the dates and put these into time slots. But the 25th, the 26th is supposed to be our first two interim dates. It might not be, but.
So on that note, I may be out as well. So you may blow four.
What time is your meeting?
Are we talking the 23rd?
25th.
22nd?
If Jim is not there, we still have Mary, Card, Mike, and John.
Okay, cool. And we can try to coordinate the time, so it doesn't go too far.
Okay. And we're picking times Thursday, we're supposed to be with you. So the 25th might end up coming off the table.
Okay. Any other discussion on that item? The next item is a potential special meeting, 6:30 for the final check run and approval of the adopted budgets. Mrs. Markcott? Do you wanna have any comment about it? Or is this disinformational?
Yes, so past couple of years, this is how we've handled it, and it gives us an opportunity to clean up a lot of stuff on our books without having to draw it over. And also, it's a good time to be able to adopt the FY17 budget.
Okay.
Do we, we have 30 days from July 1st to adopt the budget, though, right? Because if we just, I don't know when they're presenting the budget to us, so it doesn't sound like we're gonna have a lot of time to.
I talked to Debbie Todd today, they're having a public hearing on the 13th, and then they're supposedly making a decision on the budget on the 20th, the town council. That's what she told me today.
I'm sorry, June or July?
June 13th, they're having a public hearing on June 20th, if everything goes well.
30th, Tuesday.
Any other discussion on that? The next item on the agenda is funding for Open Circle, Mrs. Joan and Mrs. Dignow.
You have the backup in your packet from Mrs. Markcott to me, and explains the situation. This is one of the things Mrs. Markcott mentioned earlier, you would approve this, but the timing was so late that we're not able to arrange training before the end of this fiscal year. So I'll turn it over to you and I'm in the general.
So basically, what we did after we did get the funding is we contacted the representatives that we've used for Open Circle training in the past, and all of the trainings that occurred for the 2015-2016 school year had been completed. So in order for us to move forward with spending the money, we wouldn't be able to do it before June 30th for the 2016-2016 calendar year, we won't be able to get everybody trained prior to June 30th.
The request is if the committee chooses to continue to support the Open Circle program, which I really hope you do, you could approve a transfer from the general fund, accumulated fund balances, Mrs. Markcott suggested in FY17, effective July 1, 2016, to support the immediate startup implementation of the program. Something that we've been working really hard at for several years in order to move forward.
Would you like me to give you a little history of what's happened so far? We haven't had a pot of money in order to get all our staff trained, so we've been doing it piecemeal, finding funds here and there, send a few people at a time to training, but the goal had always been for all the teachers to be trained in the program. So they're using the same vocabulary, the same curriculum, the same strategies from classroom to classroom. So right now, with both elementary schools, it's a bit fragmented in that some people have gotten the training, and their students are benefiting from it, but not all teachers are. So it would be hugely beneficial for both schools to have all the staff trained. And with this funding, we could get it done for the remainder of the staff that have not been trained yet.
Is that everybody who's listed up?
That's everybody who's listed. Right, so what we did was we took our staff rosters and.
I'm looking for clarity from the attorneys, because we already voted to expend the money. And I guess the issue is we can't expend it in this fiscal year, so legally, technically, what do we need to do?
Either that or can we just set up a revolving fund?
I think it's a license.
We carry, we transferred it to a revolving fund carrier over the next year, so that it'll be available whenever needed.
But did you wanna make a motion?
Well, I'm asking you.
Well, usually, after a course, we'll roll in the fund down, so you already approved the funds, you approved the funds, but now there'll be leftover, and they're gonna divert from the fund down.
But they're gonna be waiting for approval for next year instead of us just doing it today and just saying, "You have the money, you need it."
Well, I think you could do it now, and you just make it effective July 1st.
It's in a couple of months.
Right, we're just looking for technical, we're gonna be doing this.
We've already voted, we already voted to approve the money, the problem is they can't spend it before the end of the year.
Jim, it's right there, a transfer from general fund accumulated fund balance in FY17, effective July 1, 2016, to support the startup and implementation of the program. That's what this is recommending.
How do we appropriate out of a 17 budget when it hasn't been approved yet? That's my concern. I mean, you can do it, right?
It's not the budget. It's accumulated fund balance that we already have.
I just rather create a permanent account, that I don't know if it's revolving, I don't know what it is, but you, I mean, if you can't do it, if somebody else has a motion, I mean, I'll support it.
So Lisa, if you create a dedicated account for this program, that could be done, correct? I mean, forget the crossover in here, you could create a dedicated account for it.
I have to ask you one more thing. I'm just trying to figure out how we can get this done tonight.
Say, we can take it out of the fund balance, and then don't take the money out of the issue of budget. Take it out of the current fund balance, and then you don't have to worry about it. You got a million and six of the current fund.
Are we making the locals?
We already have a fund balance.
Yeah, we can use the current fund balance. And then whatever goes into it after.
So can we just make that motion to take it out of the current fund balance? Regardless of when the expenditure occurs?
Yes.
It's effective July 1. Lisa may be reading what she's recommending, seeing if it's having appropriate motive.
Well, it's a transfer from, if I may, if we're looking for, the motion simply did that we make a transfer from the general fund, accumulated fund balance in FY 2017, effective July 1, 2016, support the startup implementation of the Open Circle program.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, what is that? Now, Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Okay, I make a motion that we approve, the school committee approved a transfer from the general fund, accumulated fund balance in fiscal year 2017, effective July 1, 2016, to support the startup implementation of the Open Circle program in the amount of, not to exceed, I'm sorry, $26,000.
Is there any discussion?
I'm gonna vote against it on the accounting issue that we're taking it out of the fund balance.
Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mr. Bassett?
Yes.
Mr. Clifford? Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillette?
Yes, I think.
Do you want me to put that in? Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Nado?
Yes. Thank you.
Motion carries 6-1.
Before we move on, Lisa, this is one of the reasons why I wanted that meeting with Cindy. Have we gotten a date yet on that meeting?
No, we haven't. I sent her an email, and I've also left her voicemail, and I have not heard that from her. No, as we are, she is also extremely busy right now, so I don't know if she'll be able to get a one with her until maybe sometime this summer. I really don't know, I don't wanna speak for her, I have not heard that.
Do you mind if I try then? Because I've had meetings with her before, and I've had a good relationship with her. I'd just like to try to get that meeting, because I wanna try to square this.
Well, I'd like to invite her to, we have a proposal, if additional people want to attend, they'll be able to do that.
Yeah. I think at the time, Jim had said he might want to attend, when I first brought it up.
Notice everybody. This is not for charity.
We're getting off the jackass on this one.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the NEASC update. Mr. McGee?
So, the two-year report that we did was actually filled out in October. They did not review it, they're supposed to review it in January, they did not review it until, must have been February, March. I actually corresponded for them April 22nd. They came back and said that we are still credited, but we are still on a warning. And we are still on a warning for basically eight different highlighted areas. Some of those we have actually addressed, but it didn't reflect that in the report because the report was written in October. The first one is hiring a full-time certified media specialist. We've approved that, so Mrs. Kamara has applied for that position and so forth, so that shouldn't be an issue there. That will take care of one of those items. The second one is ensure that the materials or library media centers support the needs of the curriculum. That will be one of her duties, so we kinda got that one in the works, if you will. The third one is to provide an update on the plans to upgrade the school's science labs. As you know, that kinda got put to the back burner, we tried to fast-track it, but because of some of the information that they needed wasn't, we couldn't get it done in that amount of time. So that's about a year out before that gets addressed again, I believe. The fourth one is to provide appropriate funding to support a wide range of programs and services that address students' needs and interests. We're looking at different ways to do that. One of the proposals, as you know, was that eight-period day, where that was one of the proposals, trying to get kids more opportunities and that type of thing. Since then, we've had the advanced coursework and network that came to light. We have 120 new courses now that kids have access to, so that will help us in that area there. They do have opportunities, that career center, that helps us out there. CCRI, they can take two courses each semester in their junior and senior year, that's another opportunity. And then also, as a senior, they can go to the running start program at CCRI, so I think if we put all that in, that might, I don't know if it will satisfy them, but that will certainly show that we're making gains in that area. The fifth area concerns, provide appropriate technology, support staffing to support teachers' abilities to integrate technology in the curriculum. We are a member of the FUSE Initiative. Jessie Bootash was our assigned person, she's come in and given us different technology applications and so forth, she's done some workshops. We've also promoted those in our PD sessions, the workshops, we have in-house trainers that are providing technology apps and that type of thing. So we have made some gains on that one as well. The sixth one is to update the committee on progress made to provide common planning time. That one's a kind of a difficult one, being in the schedule that we're in right now to provide planning time in a seven-period day when everything's kind of backlog right now. So Steve Boss and Mr. Peppin and I are kinda trying to find some solutions for that right now. We're looking around at other districts and different models that they have for common planning, and hopefully we'll come up with something. We're going to try probably departmental common planning time at least, if I can try to at least align the core subjects to have common time off, at least that helps us with our core subject teachers getting together. But as far as interdisciplinary common planning time, I don't have a solution for that as of yet. Seventh one is to provide an update to the implementation of a formal process based on school-wide rubrics to assess whole school and individual student progress in achieving the school's 21st century learning expectation. We just looked at that today with my leadership team. We're gonna put together a new cover sheet, so that whenever they do unit assessments and so forth, we make sure that we assess 21st century skills as well. So we have a cover sheet for that right now. Some departments are doing it, some are kind of a little bit relaxed with it, so we're gonna look at that, kind of readdress that. So that should help us out with the seventh one. And then the final one is to develop and implement a process to engage library media services in the implementation of the school's curriculum. Again, that's a library issue, we'll have Jessie there full-time now, so hopefully, her working with Claire on all our department chairs, we can work on the curriculum for the media center as well. So hopefully, if we get those things done, I have to address all those items in a report that's due in January. If I can get those things done, I think we'll probably be accredited, fully accredited, get off a warning status. But as you can see, like, I think there's like three or four of them that just have to do with the library. So by putting that full-time person there, and giving her some responsibilities, we've taken a lot of plot there from out of there.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. McGee?
So, Mr. McGee, I guess the library ones are very easily understood, right? You know, we have to take a certain action.
Yep.
The ones that I don't have a good feel for, and I'm not sure how we can help you address them, is, you know, provide appropriate funding to support a wide range of programs and services that address students' needs and interests. I mean, we have a relatively, what I think is a respectable curriculum at least. I understand there's room for improvement, but I guess, I'm not sure I understand what the difference is between the improvement that we're required to make for this task and where we wanna go in, you know, let's say, five-year educational plan. So I don't have a good feel for where that lies, or how they evaluate that. Do we have to have a plan in place? Do we have to have funding to implement it certain things?
Well, see, they're looking for a wide range of programs and services, but we had that advanced coursework network that just came to light. I mean, that just happens to be that it's free, you know what I mean? Good for us. But that created 120 opportunities for kids, you know?
But I guess that's the part that I don't understand, whether one program like that would satisfy that definition of a wide-ranging curriculum or not.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead, no.
There'll be another progress report, too, so what Tim's talking about, what you're talking about, wasn't realized back when he submitted this, but I think Tim brings up a good point. The latest innovation in the state art island with the concurrent and dual enrollment course offerings and opportunities for students at the high school could very well address that. So I think, other than that, you'd have to go back in the original NEASC evaluation report to get this specific.
Yeah, they gave me those recommendations come from a report that I wrote in October. That was before that was even thought about, you know what I mean?
No, I understand, so I guess.
So in the next, I mean, I can't really put too many more courses in there and make it be financially effective.
Well, I guess that's the next question. The next question is that we're considering, and you proposed an eight-period curriculum, so is that change a requirement that is needed for this to satisfy this deficiency?
I think, the reason I was proposing the eight-period day was because we didn't have a lot of opportunities for kids, but again, we didn't have this either, you know? So this is another thing that we have now, which, you know, we couldn't. That eight-period day thing wasn't for this coming year, I just wanted to throw it out so you knew where I was going with it. Now some things are coming to light that may not, we may not have to go on that route.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
Thank you.
Just one question. Again, the dual enrollment and a lot of the plans that are coming up, a lot of them are online, right? A lot more off-campus, the off-campus and everything, right? Do you sense that NEASC is gonna accept those, like, will the school district get credit for those, or will they say, "Those are outside sources that you're not gonna, you're not addressing what we said you need to do"?
They may say that, I can't answer that until, you know, I'm trying to offer the as many courses I can within the constraints that I have.
It's the next report.
The next report's due in January.
I mean, I know a lot of the kids in the high school, I mean, it gives a fine idea that some of them would like to see more, more offerings, you know, more, like, more electives, and that's, you know, just mention that.
Yeah, it's a result of being in a small school, you can only offer so many things. If we were a bigger school, we could offer a lot, a lot more different things, and, you know, kids could have more opportunities that way. But it wouldn't be, the more things that we offer, our client, the client base remains the same. So if we're offering more things, that just decreases class size and so forth.
I'm also hoping if we do that, that we can get the order going, the night program going, that we can offer some enrichment classes that may not be doing the traditional school day, but something we can do at night that will supplement a little bit.
Well, that's what the advanced course network is doing as well, most of those are offered in the afternoon or in the evening, some of them are offered online, you know, so we do have access to those. We do also offer some of the ingenuity class. Mr. Peppin's looking at a contract that would be district-wide with some online courses, so that would open up some opportunities as well.
Any other questions for Ms. McGee? Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda, KDC SBC update. Mr. Bassett?
The only update that we have there, I think, is the move, and I think Mr. Shaw is gonna provide a kind of a general overview. Well, I do have one other piece, but I'll wait until we get through the numbers for that piece.
So, as I provided in the packet, you know, we do have some costs, you know, with everything else going on, we're putting everything together as fast as we can. Steve and I have done a lot of legwork on getting this put together, and, you know, some of the related moves, you know, we've got some numbers there. IT, IT costs, telephone, networks, servers, Dell computers, so forth. Movement of copiers, all adds up to $24,002.45. Added security to get things up and going, and, you know, moving the current, everybody from KD over into between Andrew's building and the middle school. So that's cost of seven, just about eight grand, $7,999.1. Some more costs, you know, the Andrews, the Andrews building, I'm trying to find the right shelving, different doors, we did some modifications to the floor, kids backed down to cement, you know, trying to get Andrew's building up and ready for long-term storage, record storage, rather. So we've got some, we do have some pricing, more pricing coming in on that. Then furniture and fixtures, we have costs so far, the layout of the middle school of $2,400. And then, cost for consulting fee, there again, that's a different consulting fee she has in there at $15,000 to work on the KD project. So, a lot of moving parts, I'm looking to go to bid for the moving expenses, so we have that to present to the PBIC, and go from there.
The page is unnumbered, but the page you were just referring to, what are we spending $17,400? What does a furniture consultant do exactly? This is just a temporary rule, but it seems like an awful lot of money.
Well, $2,400 of it is to lay out the middle school for, I wanna say, dividers?
Actually, don't need it anymore.
We don't need it anymore?
No. We developed this a couple of weeks ago, and we've actually done our own layout now, so you don't need that. The other piece, if I may, Madam Chair, is that was recommended, and Jason really wanted to see this happen, too, is that basically you have a design for this building, and the design and the intentions that I understood from the PBIC is they wanted to see as much furniture reused as possible. And so, to that end, there was never any consideration in the design layout to reuse the existing furniture. For instance, the design of Mrs. Markcott's office and Alicia's office is designed such a way it won't hold either of their two desks that they're currently working out of. So we kind of broached this somewhat with Studio Major. Jason also was looking for the help from a consultant so that they could look at their existing furniture and figure out what was gonna come over, they felt very little, and then have somebody work with them to figure out what furniture would be appropriate for them to spec out to go up to bid. So this is really something that should have happened a while ago for the project itself. For our end of it, you know, we don't have anything to do with the $15,000. That was for both the town and the school, for her to evaluate the plans, because we already found out that you've got furniture that won't fit in some of the offices that it's designed. And so it's also a matter of placement of furniture, because that will affect where some of the IT drops go and everything. So none of this was done, so that's a recommendation to the PBIC.
So that is being followed up by the PBIC then?
As far as I know, it is.
Okay. Yeah, and I think that's what we would consider a soft cost under the bond.
Yeah.
As part of the design, because I know, I know, I know they did take into consideration, well, Studio Major, I've had conversations with Studio Major, that they have taken it into consideration and addressed a lot of the issues that were kind of early on, the things like storage, record storage was a huge one. I know there was some pushback on that, but, you know, you need what you need, and I think the idea there is to consolidate some, do a high-density storage, they're gonna have to reinforce a floor to do that, for example, just do the sheer weight. But I don't know if this, this $15,000 sounds like it's for the whole building, not just for the school side.
Correct, thank you. I'm sorry I didn't make that clear. It's for the whole building, for that consultant to work at the PBIC, the town, and the school.
Okay.
Because it's one thing to design it, it's another thing to outfit it.
All right.
And from our end of it, we're hoping that it will require very little furniture, that's why we're making an effort to reuse as much as possible. But then we run into a situation that I described where their desk won't fit into the design. So it's really important, Art, that the PBIC make a commitment soon to that person.
And I know that's on the, I know we received an updated, Marty, I know you were there the other night, I know, we received an updated timeline, so that hopefully will be happening. I know there's some pressure to push it, but, so I guess from my concern from the school committee side, and Marty, I don't wanna, I am gonna put you on the spot a little bit here, because we've had a couple of conversations, and we attended a meeting last night. So I think my concern going back and forth in the email last week was really, what does the school committee need to do? What can we do to make sure that, you know, the move happens on time, that things are taken care of? As of a couple of days ago, that was really nothing, because a lot of this was all As of a couple of days ago, that was really nothing because a lot of this was all sunk into the bond as soft costs. That changed a little bit last night. The town council has asked that the school committee pay for, I don't know what the wording is. I did not unfortunately have a chance to review the video today that was posted. My understanding is they're asking for us to pay for the school costs. So, right, the way that I would read that, and, and I'll get into the background a little bit in a second. But the way that I would read that is if there's anything out of this that, that we're gonna utilize after the, after the build-out, after the bond is done, that the school committee would consider paying for that upfront. There's a couple of reasons for that. The design and, and detail that was originally built out for the KD bond had a couple of things that came in high, had a couple of things that came in low. The, the end result of that is that there are, in both buildings, Kendall Dean and Bushy School, there are gonna be some items that are gonna cost more, there's gonna be some items that are gonna cost less. But both are very, very, very close to the bond amount. So if we can alleviate some of that pressure, it'll give the PBIC and the project possibly a little breathing room to include things that they're required to include. And, and the biggest, I think the biggest one, Marty, correct me if I'm wrong, but the biggest one is the elevator at Bushy School.
There's, there's a lot of moving.
There are, but, and that's not a concern for the school committee, but I guess that's just an example. So, so there was no elevator considered for Bushy School. That's a requirement for access. It's also about an eighty-five thousand dollar, if I remember right, eighty-five thousand dollar item. So, so there are, there are things that have affected that way. There's a lot of things that came under though. So if we can absorb some of this as a school committee, and I personally don't have an issue doing it, there are items that I think we're gonna be using, we're gonna utilize Andrew's school going forward, long-term. I don't have an issue doing that. I did have some open questions on a couple of the items in there and if Mr. Stanley's willing to speak to it. I did have a question on the IT side because we have funded quite a bit this year in IT.
Could I suggest we start with that page in our?
Oh, sure.
And the other thing I would ask you then tonight as a school committee, because I know that you and I have had an email conversation, but, but the issue is that this is really getting the guidance and feedback about the process and who's funding what. It's taken close to two months. And so what happens is we're under a real tough situation now. We've done almost everything we can in order to facilitate a timely move. So we've been in a holding pattern for a while, waiting for answers. One way or the other, if the committee can make a decision tonight, then if we're gonna have to implement some of this, some of it may be self-source providers, some may be MPA, some may be okay. But now the burden's on Marty in the, in the business department to pull this together, send out bits, specs, or accept proposals in order to have the place ready.
Yeah, and I think, I think some of that was clarified at the PBIC meeting last night. That, from, from the, and I don't wanna speak for, but I'll, I'll repeat what, what I heard last night, which was from the PBIC perspective and, and the last, I wanna say the meeting was April 11th, that that authorization was already given from the PBIC, so it was reiterated last night. I know there's some discrepancy there, I don't wanna argue.
But authorization to do what, though?
To, to go out to bid and do whatever you need to do to gather the information to, to get these costs. And then those would be rolled into the bond under soft costs. So as, until, until the town council voted last night, until the town council voted last night to request that the school committee pay for some of this, there was no action for the school committee. And that's, that's where I, we, now, could we have stepped in? Maybe, that's, you know, I don't wanna go back through the whole thing, but the PBIC really is the one running the show for this project.
And we, and I think you know that that's exactly the group that we respected. And we provided back in April, all of those information proposals, all of that. And so respectfully, we have been in a holding pattern. But neither here nor there, if we can get off the holding pattern tonight, it's just, you know, we gotta get off the holding pattern if you want us to be able to.
So I wanna be clear, the PBIC took you off the holding pattern last night. They reiterated last night that full authorization to go ahead with anything required for the move. And that would be covered under the soft costs. Now, the town council asked that the school committee, I know it's a lot of moving parts. Town council asked that the school committee pay for some of those costs. That's separate from the authorization to move ahead. The authorization is still, on the project itself, is still coming from the PBIC, not the school committee or the town council. This is, this is just a question of who's gonna pay for part of it.
It, it is, and respectfully, the granular part, the procurement part, is what we've been pushing for weeks is that is, it's one thing to prove it, it's another thing to tell Marty where to send the proposals to be signed, who's gonna issue the purchase rec. And, and that's the fine detail that we, we didn't get guidance on. But so we follow a soft cost and we're gonna give it to Jason.
So that would all go through the PBIC, it would go through, kind of, request for funding would go to Jason Palmerly as the town finance administrator. I mean, that's, that's just a.
But that doesn't sound like what you said the council did last night, does it?
Well, let's, let's not confuse the two things. I'm talking about general items for bid, any kind of costs that, that are incurred to, to get ready for the move. Those would be reimbursed through the PBIC. The council has asked, my understanding is that the council has asked that we cover some of the costs of this move. They asked that we cover a hundred percent, but I don't know if they put a number to it. Again, I, I wasn't in a meeting late last night and I don't know what that.
But what are the costs of the move?
Does that mean the structure, does that mean the equipment?
So it's, if we start with, we're at suggestion on IT, we can go through it. The move itself, Mike, we got two written quotes, but it clearly has to go out to bid because the quotes were really dramatically differing. And so it's a big move, so it could be as low as eight thousand, it could be as high as sixteen. Because it's a huge move. So, so that has to go out to bid, but there are other pieces, Marty, help me out here. You really, what our goal is, Mike, is to have everything ready. So that the IT, the phones, everything's ready in those rooms, except for the furniture. So for instance, Adam's done a yeoman's job. So Red Island Telephone came in and said, look, we can have all your phones all set up. They can actually be working. So when they ring here, they're gonna ring at the middle school in those empty rooms. When you move, they click a switch and it's all at the middle school. And so the same is true for technology. We can't afford downtime. So Adam's developed a plan so he can have the desktops all cloned, ready to go. So when the business department moves or PPS or Sheri, guess what? Those desktops are there, they put them on their desk, they're ready to go. So we're trying to, we've been really planning well in advance for this. So it's been a matter of getting the okay to do something.
Yeah, I think you summed it up good. I mean, we don't wanna do a rush job, we don't wanna do a midnight move, say like, okay, like this weekend, we gotta move.
Can't do it.
We're gonna run it up, too many technical issues if we do that. We really need the hardware in place, it needs to be well-tested. And like, you know, business, you can't afford the downtime.
They can't afford that.
Is, is that more because it's a new space or is that because, so if, I guess, I guess, so the hard time I had with this, Adam, and I'll leave frank, is, is if I'm moving at work, they pick me up, I, I move overnight. And I do it off-hours. So, but those spaces are already existing. The only thing I can think of is if there's, you know, a new space that you need to verify that everything works.
Right, right. Well, with the business department, it's tricky because it's the business department. And we're taking the business department, we're moving inside the school network. And so we really need to segregate that, that network. It really needs to be secured, it needs to be like well-tested. It's really, they, they can't just pick up their machines and drop it in there. It needs to be in a secure location.
About fifteen or eighteen.
Yes.
But can you appreciate it, the, the concept though of having it be ready so it's not a midnight move? So everything's ready to go and then movers come in, desks are set up. They don't lose downtime, the phones are ready, the desktops are ready. Because the burden of this is the moving company isn't gonna move the technology. It's, it's gonna be Adam in his one-man crew. So there's like fifteen to eighteen people. And so allowing him to get a leg up and have all those desktops ready and have the phones ready is huge. So that's the concept.
Yeah, no, my only, honestly, and, and again, you know, I'll, I'll, I won't pull any punches with you. My only concern was seeing another twelve computers on top of our technology spend this year. That was a, a major concern for me. So I understand if it's a new space and it needs a testing time and that. Because frankly, you know, like I said, when we move, they move me, it's overnight. I show up with a new desk and plug it in and it works. But they do all that overnight. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know if anybody else has any questions.
Computers were used a lot.
I have an idea for what we should do moving forward, but I'll let anybody else ask me.
I'm just a little confused here because when we had the joint meeting with the PBIC and the town council and the school committee, it was Joe Cardelo initially said he wanted to oversee everything dealing with the move. And then the argument was made that's not practical. And then we ended up saying, no, go ahead, you can work independently, do what you gotta do to get out of here, you know, meet the deadline. So what do you need us to do tonight in order to get you out of here by the deadline? Because I don't want the school department to be holding up the bond issue and then have a, you know, financial fiasco over that. So whatever action you need from us tonight, let's just go through it, item by item, and take care of it.
Right, let's do that. But just to be clear, Mike, this school department was given very short notice for the move and we have done everything within our power. And I can't, I have to recognize the people in this room because you just walk the hallways and see all their work or go downstairs and see what they've done. So we won't be the one, if it's held up, it's because we simply need approval to do the setup.
So let's, let's start. So let's give you the approval tonight. So just tell us point by point what you want approval on, and then we can say, yes, how we're gonna.
Well, we'll also have to consult with our, our main financial person about where the funds are gonna come from. So if we start with the tech, the technology spreadsheet, the technology needs, a simple request to approve that, those things, so we can get more.
Is this totally twenty-four thousand two forty-five?
Yes, it is.
We have some questions over here.
What do you mean who's gonna pay for it? I know what the council voted on, that doesn't mean that we voted on it.
All right, then I'm gonna be quiet because you all gotta figure that out. We were first, we were telling emails as late as last week that it's soft costs, it's the town, so.
So as of, as of today, it is soft costs. That's, that's, you're absolutely a hundred percent correct. Everything included in here is technically soft costs for the bond. So they're all included in, in what it's gonna cost to temporarily move the school folks. And, and by the way, the reason that they need to move out is because there's a lot of work that needs to be done around abatement, which is an issue. You can't, we can't just start on the first floor here and have you sitting on the second floor. So that's really the, the impetus behind it. So as far as from a bond perspective, everything you see here is what we would call a incurred cost because of the need to, to move the school department. Now, the town council, my understanding is that they asked the school committee to consider paying for that last night.
All of it, some of it?
They asked for a hundred percent, but I don't know that a number was actually, a figure was actually put on it. Again, the meeting was last night, the video came out today and, you know.
Right, I mean, are they gonna pay for their movement costs or whatever they have from their budget? Or are they gonna charge the bond fees?
Well, the difference is the school committee has to move twice, the school be timed.
Right.
The others are just moving once.
The others are just moving.
They don't have to move out, they're just gonna be moving in. We have to move out and then back in.
And, and remember, here's the thing. If, if the town employees have to move, they're moving once, first of all. But if, if it comes down to it and there's no money left in the bond for the town employees to move, the town's gonna have to pay it regardless. I mean, they're on the hook. At that point, you're, you're way too far into the expenditure to say, no, we're not gonna pay, you know, whatever it is to move.
But, but part of the bond, part of what we voted on in the bond, which I voted for, is all of these things. Now these things are changing. So, and I don't mind paying up here, but let's get to the end where they say, okay, we don't have enough money, can you throw it? Like, I, I don't, I, I'm uncomfortable about spending money on schools. When we put out this bond and they were supposed to pay for everything, now we gotta take it from, I'm gonna say, the kids or the, or, or the school system itself to move. I have a fundamental problem.
So, so there's a difference in, in the move itself and some of the things that I don't think were foreseen in, in the original bond? And one of the things that wasn't foreseen in the original bond is moving, because I know, and Mr. Lindbergh, correct me if I'm wrong, you were there way back when, and I mean before the vote. And, and I think one of the things that we thought we could do would be to start, do things like start renovation on the first floor. You guys would stay up there on the second floor, we'd finish, we'd move you downstairs or vice versa, however you wanted to do it. So there were some things that we thought would be able to happen, but then when you get down into the detail of it, they can't happen that way. So one approach would be, yes, absolutely, let the bond money run its course, see if it covers it all. If it doesn't, it doesn't, and, and then we decide what to do then. The town council has asked us to cover the cost for the school side of it. I don't have an issue with paying for those costs outside of the bond because those are things that the school and the school department is gonna reap as a benefit long after this bond is done. So in other words, Andrew's school is not a requirement for this bond. It just so happens that it's, it's a, it's a help and a, and a great solution for now, for the temporary because it would save doing things like pulling in a temporary classroom and sticking it out here in the parking lot for the administration to sit in for the next year. So it's, it's a permanent, the reason why I don't have an issue with it is it's a permanent improvement to facilities we already own and control from the school side of it. And that we'll eat that benefit out of. So whether it comes out of the bond money or, or our money, I don't really, it's, it's still the taxpayers' money at the end of the day. And that's really why I'm okay with this. If it were just them, honestly, just saying, you know, hey, we didn't account for this and we want you to pay for it, I, I might have a little issue with it. So some of the soft costs in there, things like design for Kendall Dean, I really wanna see that come out of the bond. I don't think we should be paying for that just yet. So I'm not in agree, in agreement with paying for a hundred percent. But I, I don't have any issue paying for anything that at the end of the day is gonna be under the school department's purview and to its benefit. And, and really, right now, that means any kind of improvement to the middle school to, to satisfy the temporary move and any kind of improvement to Andrews and anything that surrounds that directly.
Right, but the move itself.
The move itself hasn't even been priced out yet.
Correct, and so if I follow Art's logic, and I think I do, he makes a good point on many of the items on this, on, on the spreadsheet. So if you all decide, if somebody can eventually decide to pull, to pull the trigger here, but on the move, you're, you're a hundred percent correct. That, and Lisa was whispering to me, those specs, we can write the specs, but the town really should put it out to bid for the physical move. It shouldn't be on you to fund that. And that should be one legitimate thing to come out of soft costs if you are all gonna pick up the rest. Because you, you offer a good logic for these purchases because you're right, we will reuse them. And the basement of Andrews is probably gonna become a major storage archive. We've already begun working on that. But the physical move, I agree with Jim, that should be something that the town should absorb.
And, and let me just, just for, unless anybody has any, any real objection, I, so just adding up the two items here and not including those things on there, we've got a total of twenty-four, two four, twenty-four thousand two hundred forty-five dollars forty-four cents. That includes phones, network, PC, printing, the network switch and the, the tonica copiers. And then we have the security-related costs. That would be thirty-two, two thirty-six, so for, you know, let's say thirty-two five hundred for, you know, general rounding, I guess.
As you continue out, I appreciate when you get there that you do round up and put an estimate because some of these.
Oh, agreed, I know, they're, they are estimates. So, so, so that covers, I think, most of the items. I don't know, there's a couple other items, and, you know, go ahead, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you, yeah.
Let me just test, let me just test.
I'm just trying to keep a running total.
Right, so you're saying it's about thirty-two thousand now? You said that that upgrades school areas, areas that will, so it's not the move there, then we pick up and move back?
Correct. Now, there may be, I wanna qualify that with one thing. There may be some things that, like, like Marty had included in there, the shelving, and I know we're still getting prices for that. But there may be shelving installed temporarily at Andrews that may be brought back to Kendall, but it'll still be under the school use.
So if I, yeah, if I may, the shelving that we're looking at is really high-quality and it has to be very strong for, to maintain a lot of weight. And so we have organized ourselves in such a way that the basement of Andrews, the two humidifiers down there, that will become one of our main areas of long-term storage. And so because of that, the shelving's involved. So if we could go on to that page, and I'm gonna estimate, jump in, on the shelving, I'm gonna estimate at least between five to six thousand dollars. The shelving is high-quality and extremely. The shelving is high quality and extremely expensive. The fire alarm hookup at Andrews Building, it may cost us nothing, but we don't know, we're assuming that, and the HVAC and heating system at Andrews Building has been evaluated, and believe it or not, the air conditioning outside unit, the condenser, is nineteen seventy-three, and it still runs, and we don't know how long, but it still runs, knock on wood.
It started, I didn't believe it was done.
So the, we have the need for some partitions within two thirty-seven and two thirty-five to separate some of the office areas, some seven-foot-high partitions, we don't have a price on that yet, and the biggest thing, it just came in today, because Marty and I have been after this for a while, as you know, the people in two thirty-five and two thirty-seven at the middle school will be working year-round, that's through the summer, and so they really need, those rooms get oppressively hot, and so we pursued two quotes for AC. One is what's called standalone units, they're moving cool, they're standalone, they're ducked through the ceiling, and the other is permanent. They both came in around nineteen thousand dollars, and I would not want to see your people, your staff, move to those two rooms with fans, I mean, they spend a lot of time in those offices, and those rooms are oppressively hot.
So the only.
But you can reuse the moving cools.
Where would you reuse those? Because that's an enormous cost.
Well, I'll tell you, the moving cools, they have some pretty tough situations on the third floor at the middle school.
Then move upstairs.
And plus, there's no, right now, there's no provision for your renovated building here for anything, any air conditioning, and so I don't know if they're going to put back in window units, but the moving cools can be reused.
Yeah, I don't, I know there's, I know there's an enhancement to the existing system in the building, and I believe there is a cooling solution, but I, for here, but I'm not sure how extensive that is, we can talk about it offline, but that's because I know we had a discussion, I think, we, Marty, they were talking about what goes up into the attic, and it was a passive system that was supposed to circulate the air. So essentially, there's a passive system installed already in the building, ductwork and what have you, that here.
Okay.
A lot of those have been blocked over the years, it was basically supposed to circulate air for, I don't know, a hundred years ago, maybe the air freshener, I don't know what it is, but essentially, what Studio Major said, that over the years, being covered up, they were probably covered up because really all it did was make it draft.
So to do those two rooms at the middle school, we looked at three options, one was in the ceiling, units that would go would be wired and have rooftop units, the other was, duckless, thank you, the other was duckless, and the other was, okay, what if you put window units in? And to put window units in, you have to take out physically the whole window blazing structure, the whole structure.
Yeah, and you don't want to.
Because the hoppers are too small. That's really, it's really, it's really quite expensive, so the cheapest way to go is either the duckless or the moving cool.
So with the ones that are movable, I mean, how movable are they? Are they, are they what they can, like you roll them out, or?
You roll them out, they get exhausted into the ceiling, the drop ceiling, and they blow wherever you set them, you go straight up to the ceiling, vent it into the ceiling, and it cools it down.
But I guess my point is, it's something that the existing staff could, not necessarily the office administration workers, but the existing maintenance staff could handle moving those around, no additional expertise needed.
They do have a container that has to be emptied every night, which is whatever.
The condensator.
What does the school committee specifically do with regard to this?
So I don't know, I don't know that we've had the, can we hold off on the air conditioning piece for a bit, or no? No, that would have to be done, so I guess, I would suggest, and this is entirely. I don't have an issue with doing the cost that we have in front of us, which would be.
We would have to go out to bid for the moving cools. We would have to go out to bid for that, for them in their brief installation. My guess is the steel shelving, we should probably have to go out to bid for, so if the committee wants us to move on some of this on our own, we need to know tonight, because Marty is going to have to develop a bunch of bits, specs, and we're going to have to get them out, get them back, and we all have to, will have to approve. Some of this we can move on, it doesn't require bits, specs.
So, and please feel free to poke holes in my theory, because I don't know everything here either, but I do have the benefit of seeing both sides of it. I don't have any issue with saying, throwing out a round number, I just added those, all those up, it comes to fifty-seven, five, I don't have an issue with saying that we would approve sixty thousand for costs incurred to set up the temporary improvements, and then however those split out, if nineteen goes to the cooling and five goes to the shelving, or, you know, twenty-two goes to, you know, that's, we can figure out the details later, but we know those, we know at least fifty-seven, five is going to be needed on the table. So that would give you a little bit of a cushion.
Like your approach, go with roughly.
Can you make that motion on the side?
I'll make a motion that the school committee approved funding for up to sixty thousand dollars for permanent improvements to the temporary space under the bond.
From the items that were presented on this package?
From the items presented here, so air conditioning, shelving, and then the items under the technology.
Seven-foot partitions, things we're getting prices for.
Right.
And it was seconded, is there a discussion?
So what happens if we go down this road, and the town council says, no, you're paying for everything, you're going to pay all the soft costs, you're paying every, is there any contingency here, I mean, should we?
If the town council decides to do that at their next meeting, basically that throws the bond away, because we are under a tight deadline under the PBIC that we need to get moving, and there are some contingency weeks built into the timeline, they're few and far between, though, quite frankly, if you want to get construction moving and be able to get into this building to start this summer, because remember, everything falls on this, Kendall Dean is the dominant that has to fall first. In order to move the police, in order to move the town employees, you need to do Kendall Dean first, so they need to have the school department lined up ahead of time.
And I understand that, but I'm just uncomfortable about committing to that.
Yeah.
You know what, Jim, it's sixty thousand dollars, and he's asking for a commitment for it tonight, if that moves the thing up ahead, I'm all for it, Jim.
What's twenty thousand?
Sixty thousand, because it's the tax-based money, whether it comes from the school or whether it comes from the town, it's the tax-based money, and one way or another, somebody has to pay the bill, and if this is what we have to do to make this happen, I'm all for making this happen.
I agree with you, except that I don't want to keep on coming back and get hit with bills after bill after.
Well, I don't want to either, but I think this is a tenuous situation where we have to take some action so they can meet their time.
I mean, let me just give you a contract, okay? Put everything up for bid, send them the bill, if they don't want to pay it, we don't move. Simple enough, whether it's custody and control of the school department, and I'm not saying go there, I'm just saying, you know, they're throwing in our lap, and we're caving right now, and I don't like caving for sixty thousand. I do mind caving, it's sixty now, sixty, sixty, sixty.
So I don't look at it as caving, because I don't, I didn't consider, none of this was considered in the original bond proposal, it wasn't considered that the temporary move was going to be to Andrews, I mean, if, you know, if you want to throw the costs back.
I just got a stretch, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, if you want to throw the costs back and say, you know, tough nut, figure it out, I mean, that's an option too. I personally, and I said it earlier, but the way I view it is that the school administration and we're gaining some space here, we're gaining the use and reuse of Andrews, we're gaining hopefully some needed help upstairs, and we've been hearing about the middle school air conditioning situation for, you know, since it was built.
But, okay, so we're playing nice in the sandbox.
Well, we're playing nice in the sandbox for things that we know we're going to gain a benefit of.
Yeah, well, okay, but then are we going to get level funded?
I, you know what, that's a bigger political question than.
It may be, but now we're spending money that we're not going to, we're not expecting, we're expecting a certain amount of money, now we're spending an extra sixty, and we're not going to not only get that, I mean, if we're all playing nice in the sandbox, no problem, that's all I'm saying.
I would have to go back in the conversation room.
Continue then, let me.
I was assuming that we were spending the money out of this year's potential surplus that was still, we still haven't expended the full amount, and that's where I thought we were spending this money.
Right, but we may need that next year if they're going to level fund this.
Jim, if they level funded us, John and I did the math months ago, with a million-dollar surplus built into this year's budget, you could increase every line item in the budget by four and a half percent if they gave us, if state or the local gave us zero, so I'm not.